Council will come to order, the clerk will call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Conley, Counselor Consalvo, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamatino, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Ross, Counselor Yancey.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. We've also been joined by Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, and Counselor Jackson. I now have the honor of introducing an old friend of all of ours and a great spiritual leader in his own right in the city of Boston, Father John Uni from St. Cecilia's Church. Many of us will remember about a year and a half ago at the funeral of former mayor Kevin White, Father John Uni presided over that and did so with his usual charm and elegance. I hereby give you Father John Uni for the invocation today. Thank you.
I'm hardly a great spiritual leader. I bumble along like all of us do, but it does, but we try our best, right? And I know that that's what our gathering is about today. So, thank you for this opportunity to lead the invocation and acknowledging all of our different faith backgrounds and the richness of our backgrounds, our traditions. Let's call on this God of our understanding to be with us. Lord God, first of all, we thank you for this spectacularly beautiful day. We thank you for generous hearts that desire to serve, not to count the personal costs, but hearts that want to help and advocate for others. We thank you for this city, for our mayor, and whoever will be our next mayor. We thank you for this city council, for the leadership in this community. And in this time of transition, let's remember our responsibilities. Lord, help us to be with each other in our goodness to each other, in our differences of opinion, our strategies to help. Be with us in our desire to continue to better this city each day, each decision, in our quest for the common good and betterment of all God's people, especially the most vulnerable in our midst. May this council today be a voice for the voiceless, be strength for the weak, and a place of accessible hope for all who are in any way disenfranchised. Guide all of us in our constituencies, and we ask all this in God's name. Amen. Thank you.
I'd ask all to please remain standing as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance. the invocation. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes from last week's meeting stand approved. Seeing and hearing, no corrections or objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1471, message in order to reduce the FY14 appropriation for reserves for collective bargaining by $397,500 to provide funding for the library department for the FY14 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, known as AFSMI, Council 93, Local 1526. Docket number 1472, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $397,500 for the library to cover the FY14 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, known as AFSMI, Council 93, Local 1526, filed in the office of the city clerk on September 16, 2013.
Docket's 1471 and 1472 are referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1473, message in order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act establishing an inclusionary development policy and special fund in the city of Boston.
Docket 1473 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1474, message in order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to accept and expend funds of $29,945,245 for the purpose of producing and preserving affordable housing in the city of Boston.
Docket 1474 will be referred to the Committee on Housing. Docket 1475, 76, and 77 will be read together.
Docket number 1475, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $10,000 from Mass Bike for the purpose of the Boston Police Academy to develop an e-learning course on bicycle laws. Docket number 1476, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept a donation of a 2014 GMC Terrain four-door sports utility vehicle from the United States Marshal Service for use by the Boston Police Department's Fugitive Unit. Docket number 1477, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept a donation of a new 2014 Coleman 15BH travel trailer for Camping World RV sales for use by the Police Department for community outreach.
Counselor Ross, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket's 1475, 1476, and 1477. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 1475, 1476, 1477 has passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1478, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 31, 2013.
Docket 1478 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1479, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Jesse Jeter as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring on September 9, 2015.
Docket 1479 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1480, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Trin Nguyen as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring on September 9, 2015.
Docket 1480 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1481, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and Trinity Northampton Phase 1 Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Docket 1481 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Counselor Lamatino to the podium.
Docket number 0277, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 6, 2013, docket number 0277, and ordinance amending the Municipal Banking Commission and providing for responsible banking practices in the city of Boston submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket number 0277, also known as the Invest in Boston Act, was sponsored by Counsel at Large Felix Arroyo and introduced on Wednesday, February 6, 2013. Last Tuesday, September 10, a public hearing was held. At the following day's meeting, September 11, I asked that we postpone the vote for one week, which brings us to today, and we'll be recommending passage and adoption of this bill. We'll be voting for it and encourage you all to do the same. I'll let the lead sponsor, Counsel Arroyo, to get into some specifics, but very simply put, the city has a billion dollars' worth of savings in several financial institutions. What this bill would do, as other cities have done, is help leverage that and make sure that the institutions with which the city banks are really invested in the community. It will provide real-time information in terms of their lending practices, their mortgage practices, business loans, obviously all the qualified people. It will really help open up the books and make sure that we have a city that does business with banks that truly are invested in the city, and that is why I support it. Thank the lead sponsor for his diligent work on this effort and look forward to the vote presently. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Chair recognizes lead sponsor Felix Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, allow me to thank my city councillor representing Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury, a good friend of mine and chairman of the Governor's Office Committee, for how flexible and how cooperative he has been throughout this entire process, and I very much appreciate it, Counselor. You know, I feel like I've waited four years for today, and that's because I did. I am terribly looking forward to having the opportunity for the council to weigh in on this efficiently and to make a decision on this matter before us. You know, the Invest in Boston at its core says that, you know, we have a billion dollars' worth of deposits in banking services, and we should, in fact, do business with banks that do business with our neighborhoods. There are a lot of institutions out there that are lending to our small businesses in our neighborhoods, that are creating home ownership opportunities in our neighborhoods, that are hiring Bostonis, that are supporting development projects that build more housing, create more businesses, and put people to work. And those are the institutions that we should be doing business with. It allows us to know who is who and what is what, and frankly, to put our money where our mouth is. You know, I've, having gone through this for so many years, I've heard so many very valid concerns and questions raised, and I've tried to answer all of them. I provided all of my colleagues here a letter from Jay Gonzalez, former Secretary of Administration Finance for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Governor Deval Patrick. Most, if not all, of us would regard him as an expert in this field. And in his words, he says, "He is comfortable with the proposed ordinance from a financial perspective because it is a structure and a manner that permits community development and investment criteria to be taken into account in addition to, and not at the expense of, the principal financial objectors of any procurement and banking financial services." I think that puts the rest of some of the concerns folks have had. Very clear and it's well-written there. And that's not from me, that's from someone I think we all would call an expert when it comes to these matters. I speak specifically because there's one particular, you know, the Mass Bankers Association has come out in opposition to this and wrote, and I highlighted it, "This is a solution in search of a problem." You know, when I stand with city life outside of families being foreclosed upon, I see a problem looking for a solution. When I walk all smart business districts and I see our empty storefronts, even the ones right near my house, Counsel O'Malley knows that if he walks South Street from the Casey Overpass to the Center JP, you'll see a tenth number of empty storefronts in Jamaica Plain, a neighborhood that's doing well economically. I see a problem looking for a solution. When I see the many Bostonians qualified with good credit scores, looking to buy a home but unable to do so, and having to leave our city because of it, I see a problem looking for a solution. When I see one in five Bostonians living under the federal poverty line, that's $23,000 for a family of four. That's the federal poverty line, but we know that that would not be the municipal poverty line. I suspect you're still living in poverty in Boston if you're making $30,000 for a family of four. But even with the federal's low standard of poverty, one in five Bostonians live there today. Forty percent of all Latino children live there today. Thirty-five percent of all black children live there today. One in three of all Asians live there today. That's today's Boston. This bill, I don't see it as a panacea. I don't believe it's going to solve everything that we have to solve in our city, but it takes the steps toward creating pathways out of poverty and into the middle class for so many of our residents. It takes the steps of stabilizing neighborhoods by strengthening our small business district, increasing homeownership, which stabilizes neighborhoods more than anything else. I'm proud to be the author of this, and I'm proud to have the support of so many organizations like Community Labor United, the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance, the NAACP, SEIU 32BJ District 615, ESAC Boston, the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization, the Greater Boston Legal Services, the many small businesses that have come and testified, the hundreds who have signed petitions and sent them to your office, the many who have emailed, the many who have called who have said, "We must invest in banks that invest in Boston." I'm so grateful that we'll be voting today. I'm grateful for all of my colleagues who have provided input constructive throughout this process, and I'm so very much looking forward to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, congratulations to Counselor Arroyo for sponsoring this and for sticking to it for four years. Back in 2010, as a Democratic candidate for state treasurer, I offered something quite similar in a statewide fashion, that Massachusetts should take the money that it invests and place it in the banks that are working the Main Street districts in every city and town in the Commonwealth. The state treasurer, Steve Grossman, also submitted something similar and is taking those steps now. So I'm here to support fully Counselor Arroyo's Invest in Boston Act, and there's nothing wrong with it. We all remember back in 2008, when in order to spur our economy, which had sputtered, the Federal Reserve bailed out the largest banks in hopes that those banks would then recirculate that money into the economy to get the economy moving again. And what did those banks do? They sat on that money, and the economy continued to be cash-starved. And these are the banks that are charging 28% and 30% interest to credit cards to many of the people, many of the poorer people who are living on credit in the city of Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And then we have these smaller banks that are in our neighborhoods, that partner in our business districts, that partner with the city, that step up all the time, they sponsor Little League teams, they sponsor parades, they sponsor beautification processes within their business districts, and those are the banks that are not getting the city's assets. I know there's a financial or fiduciary responsibility on the part of the city treasurer, also on the part of this body, but take the whole equation, take into account the economy in every business district in this city, and will this, Invest in Boston, improve those business districts? Well, yes, they will, because we're going to put our money in our business districts, and that's the idea behind this. That's why I commend Counsel Arroyo. I think it's a no-brainer for us to do, and I think we should have done it a couple of years ago, but we're here now, and we're hopefully going to get this done and send it on to the mayor, for I hope would be his approval. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes my good friend, Counsel Yana Presley. I just remind everyone, please hold your applause. Thank you. Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise to commend the maker. I offer one correction. You said you've been waiting four years. You've been working for four years for this moment, and so I commend you for that. And this is very important. I think this is the principal thing to do. Certainly, it is the most economically beneficial thing to do because if we have some families who know the peace of mind that comes from economic security, some neighborhoods who have a thriving Main Street, that isn't good enough because success that isn't shared really isn't success at all. So I commend the maker. I look forward to voting in the affirmative for this effort, which will increase and maximize opportunities for our families and our small business, and to ensure that everyone has an equity and opportunity for family stabilization and wealth building. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson.
Mr. President, I rise to commend the maker. This is an important bill for the city of Boston, but for me, it's an important bill for my personal situation. From 2004 to 2008, folks who had credit scores of 60 or higher, many of them actually got subprime loans. 6.2% of white folks got subprime loans. 19.3% of Latino folks got subprime loans, and 21.4% of black folks got subprime loans. Mr. President, Invest in Boston is an important topic and issue for the city of Boston, but it's one for me personally. Last year, my house fell into foreclosure, like many folks in the city of Boston. I had to renegotiate my loan with the bank, and based on things that happened at the state level, and I wish Invest in Boston was there at the city level to help. We have a latency. We have people who are still facing these issues. And I'm someone who makes what a city councillor makes in the city of Boston. My loan actually ballooned an additional $1,000 based on how it was written. And so this, again, is something personal to me, and I appreciate the maker. I believe that Invest in Boston is something that will provide transparency, but also will be transformational for the people of the city of Boston. It will provide metrics on who lends to small businesses, women-owned businesses, businesses owned by people of color, but it also will do something that we do to all of the students, all 55,000 students in the city of Boston. It will give them a grade. And in a city of Boston, if a student doesn't get a passing grade, they go to summer school, like I did once, maybe twice. Let the record reflect, Mr. President. But if they fail, they also can get cutback. So there is an actual result to the young people not doing well. This is the same thing that Invest in Boston does. It gives a report card and allows for that report card to be used in terms of how we either progress or regress. So I stand wholeheartedly in support of this measure. It is about time that we invest in the city of Boston, and I would ask my colleagues to stand with the maker and his four years of work on this, to continue to invest in the city of Boston and make it better for every single resident of the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend my good colleague, Counselor Felix Arroyo, on his determination on a matter that surely will affect the neighborhoods and the working-class people of the city. So I just rise to commend him on that, and I will be voting favorably on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to commend the maker. I was very proud to be a co-sponsor of this legislation because I believe it really is in the rich tradition of the city of Boston that actually has a linked deposit program, which I supported in the early 80s. I sponsored legislation, the South African divestment legislation, that not only required the city to disinvest from businesses that were supporting a very Nazi-like racist regime in South Africa, but it had a provision that the money that was disinvested had to be reinvested in businesses in the city of Boston. It's also in the tradition of the battle for the Community Reinvestment Act on a federal level, and the HAMD requirements also requiring reporting. And it provides a great incentive for our banks to do what they should be doing. Back in the late 1980s, we had another crisis with the banks, and that crisis was brought on by the fact that many of our local banks were involved in speculative investment, not in investing in the homes of people living in the city of Boston, but taking money out of those communities, investing it in very risky deals, which they lost. So I am an enthusiastic supporter of this legislation that sends the right message to the right people. We expect those who do business with the city of Boston to reinvest here. And later on this year, probably as soon as next week, I will be submitting legislation around the city's purchases, because I believe our vendors should also be given some preference if they located in the city of Boston and they employ Boston residents as well. So I commend the maker, and I certainly look forward to, hopefully are unanimous about this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Counsel O'Malley at this time moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0277. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Counsel Arroyo dials the vote. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Conley, Counsel Consalvo, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatino, Counsel Linehan, Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, Counsel Ross, Counsel Yancey. Mr. President, we have a unanimous 13-0 vote.
Congratulations, Counsel Arroyo.
Just to make a brief statement, I appreciate the time, to thank all who came here today and support, but to thank my colleagues for the vote you cast today. We did a very good thing for the city of Boston, and should this ever become implemented, and I hope it soon will, we will see our neighborhoods become stronger as a result of this. So thank you all for your vote today. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, docket 1310.
Docket number 1310, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on August 21, 2013, docket number 1310, message and ordinance amending number 1310, Message and Ordinance Amending the City of Boston's Code Ordinances Regulating Problem Properties in the City of Boston, Chapter 9-13.1 and 16-55 and 16-56.1 submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Matt O'Malley on docket 1310.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I chaired a Government Operations Committee hearing on docket number 1310, an ordinance amending City of Boston Code Ordinances Regulating Problem Properties in the city of Boston, Chapter 9-13.1, 16-55, and 16-56.1. Want to thank my colleagues, Counsel Baker, who participated in the hearing, and Counsel Yancey as well. This matter was filed by Mayor Menino and was introduced at the Boston City Council's weekly meeting on Wednesday, August 21. It was assigned to the Committee on Government Operations, and again, a public hearing was held last Thursday, September 12. The purpose of these changes is to help the city better identify properties that show ongoing criminal and other illegal activity that endangers the health, safety, welfare, and livability of our neighborhoods. You will see in the committee report that, quote, "These amendments would strengthen the existing mechanisms and enforcement measures regarding problem properties." The proposed changes are, again, to Chapter 16-55, public nuisance properties; Chapter 16-56.1, penalties for valid complaint problem properties; and Chapter 9-13.1, establishing a problem properties task force. Major legislative changes include the following. This expands the membership of the problem properties task force. It revises the definition of a problem property. It adds a new section that would establish an appeal process, including the right to a hearing, which formerly did not exist. It adds a new section allowing city departments to deny, revoke, or suspend permits or licenses for nonpayments of code violation fines. It adds language to classify valid complaint problem properties as a public nuisance. It reflects the actual number of police calls for certain problem properties, and also requires certain owners to pay for police response. There are two amendments to what you may have received when this was introduced. One is technical in nature. The other is an amendment that I've asked and the administration has agreed to that will increase the reporting requirements from once a year to a quarterly report. So the changes of this existing legislation will help all of us do our jobs better. I think the mayor and the administration deserve tremendous credit for establishing the problem properties task force. We all know problem properties, those frequent flyers, those chronic calls that we've received that really get to speak to the heart of what we do in dealing with it. This allows for more tools and allows for better handling, better safeguards in places such as an appeal process, as well as some other things. I urge you to support this measure as this, I urge you to adopt this measure as it is passed in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley at this time moves. Chair recognizes the clerk. Clerk suggests to the chair that if you are adding an amended version, you have to move for substitute language.
Much so. Rise for unanimous consent to move for substitute language. Thank you.
Jackson seconds the request. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Aye.
Substitute language is adopted. Question now comes on acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1310 in a new draft. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1310 has passed in a new draft. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1037, order approving a petition for special law regarding the return authority of the liquor license process to the city of Boston.
Docket 1037 remains in the Committee on Government Operations. Chair recognizes Counsel Matt O'Malley on docket 1037.
As our clerk well knows, this, again, is the liquor license bill championed by Counsel at Large Ayanna Pressley. This is something that I support and really applaud her tenacity in this. There was a hearing that was held several weeks ago. This was the follow-up working session where we convened and edited the bill a bit. There will be an additional working session as we try to make sure that we can find the right compromise and really put forward and strengthen this very thoughtful piece of legislation. So stay tuned for the next working session. Hope that you will all be able to participate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Docket 1037 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, docket 1396.
Docket 1396, message and order authorized from the mayor's office of emergency management to accept and expend a grant of $14,517,000 from the United States Department of Homeland Security, DHS, Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI, grant for fiscal year 2013 to address the unique planning, training, exercise, equipment, and operational needs of the large urban areas and assist them in building an enhanced and sustainable capacity to prevent, to respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosives, CBRNE incidents.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Mike Ross, the Chair of Public Safety on docket 1396. And the chair would like to commend him on his quick turnaround on this $14 million matter. Chair recognizes Counsel Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor to work on this committee. This is a sizable grant from the Federal Homeland Security Office, and it represents a significant increase from even just last year, where we saw about $8 million of a total $10 million grant, where the state government holds about 20% for their own state agencies. These are for our first responding departments, police, EMS, and fire. And it's broken up into a series of priorities and grants. These priorities are reached by nine different communities, our metro region, and by the essentially first responder authorities of each of those nine communities that collectively apply for a grant that pays for these priorities. I also have a copy of what the actual spending is that my colleagues can have for their records. But it's everything from investing in bomb-smith sniffing canines and cars to transport them to robotic technology that our bomb squad can use. And it's, most of it is for real kind of regional terrorist prevention activity. And it's, you know, some, some of this technology will actually be able to be used locally for also local policing efforts. For example, some video technology for ShotSpotter, which is a local priority that's been championed by our city councilor, our colleague, Rob Consalvo. And so this will be building on that technology and continue to congratulate him on his good work in that area. So there's a real, there's a four-page list of where these resources are going to be spent, and I will send this around to my colleagues. You should also know that there are groups out there that have concerns about this much capacity for our community around videoing people, et cetera. You should also know that I've been in touch with, it's a festive day here on the city You should also, excuse me, you should also know that I've been in touch with those groups that have concerns, and we're putting them in touch with the information that they're requesting, the safeguard information they're requesting and other information. So I'll continue to work with them and make sure that our civil liberties, which they seek to protect, are being protected. So with that, I would ask that we move on this matter today for the passage of the $14 million-plus grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross at this time moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1396. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1396 has passed. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1482. Counsel Linehan offered the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding act, an act regarding attacks on certain alcoholic beverages.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Bill Linehan on docket 1482.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an attempt to reclaim some money that a referendum has sort of taken away in a statewide referendum, which repealed this particular tax across the state. This formal petition would allow the city of Boston to impose a local excise tax on the sale of alcoholic beverages sold at package stores, liquor stores, for off-premise consumption. The revenue generated from this tax would be used to fund prevention, treatment, and treatment programs for dependencies and substance abuse in the city of Boston. Substance abuse leads to an increase in crime, creates adverse effects on families, and impacts the vitality of the city's neighborhoods. Substance abuse prevention and treatment programs offers necessary tool to treating addiction and to reducing the above-mentioned crimes, incarcerations, and the like. Funding of such a program is needed, wholly underfunded throughout the city and the state. And it needs this assistance in this way so that we can create greater opportunities for treatment on demand and for alternative programs that would not incarcerate people, but sentence them to a program of a significant amount of time, which they would have a real opportunity in becoming sober and no longer dependent on whatever that substance is. And alcohol, folks in the alcohol business will say, well, you know, we don't, we're not the cause of all this problem. Well, very few people who end up in any dependency situation who abuse substances, it's usually alcohol that is their first interaction. It's their first activity. Rarely, rarely is it not. I think of myself. I've been drinking for, I can't say how old, because then I would be breaking the law back then. But I just think of $0.50 a beer. And to pay $0.53 a beer and be putting money toward dependent substance abuse programs and for treatment, I hope it doesn't encourage me to drink more. I say that in jest, of course. LOL on the text, okay? There are so many, this problem is so huge, and it so affects our community, that every time that there's a crisis or a trauma, not just in a community, but in individual families, so many people are affected. And a target tax in this area would be extremely beneficial for us. Might add that we don't only treat our own people who are under the scourge of substance abuse. We don't. We treat those of greater Boston. We treat them of the region. And if you look at the statistics at our local methadone clinics, at our hospitals, at homeless shelters, you will realize that people come here, not in search of those, but in search of the substance, and then eventually find themselves in that situation. So I think this is, we sell a lot of alcohol. We should have the opportunity to tax it a bit so that we can relieve the city of some of the scourge of substance abuse. So I thank you for the opportunity. I know I went over my time, but it's a truly personal matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Linehan, for your leadership on this one. I think it's safe to say that if your family is not affected by drugs and alcohol, you can consider yourself blessed. All neighborhoods are affected by it. Most households are affected by it. And I just wanted to stand to possibly consider expanding this to consider on-premise licenses also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. And could you add the name of Counsel Baker to that? Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey to speak on the matter.
Just very briefly, I want to say to Counsel Linehan, congratulations. I think this is a very important piece of legislation. And I think it recognizes the fact that we underfund treatment programs in the city of Boston, and this is a mechanism to deal with that issue. Far too many people are turned away when they reach the conclusion that they have a problem. And as you know, it is very characteristic of those who have an addiction to be in a state of denial. But once they come out of that state of denial seeking for help, shame on us if we can't provide them with the resources necessary to help them rid themselves of their addiction that has a very negative impact, not only on their families, but the community as a whole. So I think this is a very thoughtful piece of legislation, and I want to commend our colleague and ask that my name be added.
Please add the name of Counsel Charles Yancey as well. Madam Clerk, please also add my name to Counsel Linehan's docket 1482. And 1482 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, 1483.
Docket 1483. Counsel Jackson offered the following order for a hearing regarding cooperative registration fees requirements within the new rental inspection ordinance.
Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson on docket 1483.
Mr. President, as a district councilor, I have received many calls, thousands of emails about the rental inspection ordinance. One glaring issue that has been brought to my attention while speaking to members of the board at St. Joseph's is that we have exempted many folks in the condo community, but haven't exempted many folks who are in the cooperative community. And that's something, and it's a type of housing that many of us have been learning more about. And I think in cooperatives where they are well-run, and cooperatives where people are able to get things fixed in a timely manner, and people are living in their own homes, they should have an opportunity to be exempted from this legislation. And so, again, I would ask for a speedy hearing and that we really look at who was actually included in the rental registration fee requirements. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. This should go to Government Operations, but I believe City and Neighborhood Services is holding a hearing next Monday on the rental ordinance. So I think I'm going to assign this to City and Neighborhood Services so it can be part of that hearing next Monday. Be quick action on it as long as the chair assents. Counsel La Matina, do you assent? Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Mike Ross.
I just want to add that I think this is good, but I want to point out, this is now the second person who initially was in favor of this legislation, with all due respect, that is now moving that there's clearly a problem with it. And I just think that we, as a council, have to acknowledge that maybe we passed the wrong legislation, that we shouldn't have passed this rental housing legislation. It's just clearly not good law. It's heavily bureaucratically laden and is screaming out for our repeal and our significant change thereof. I know there's a hearing coming up on it, but, you know, we should call it for what it is, and I guess that's what I'm doing right now. Thank you.
Can I stand the strain? Counsel Ross and Counsel Linehan have finally agreed on something. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I voted for the ordinance. I don't need any assent or any comment from the peanut gallery over here. I voted for it. But I have learned that when you make a mistake, it's good to admit it publicly. And I think during my entire career on the city council, I've made mistakes before and I've admitted those mistakes. I think this council has made a few mistakes as a body. Sometimes they own up to it, sometimes they didn't. I know no one has owned up to the mistake made concerning Counsel Turner and the mistake made in the conduct of that particular hearing that the highest court in the Commonwealth ruled was a mistake. But I didn't hear anybody, especially the president at the time, admit that there was a mistake. But I But I am rising because we did make a mistake. I made a mistake by supporting this legislation. It was very well-intentioned. It certainly was meant to provide for safer housing units for tenants, but it simply went too far. And that's why I filed 17th F order to get clarification, and that's why I filed for a hearing that has been postponed until next Monday because I believe we have to take another look at it. And the problem I have with the legislation is not so much the intention or the goal, but its implementation. Imagine our residents, law-abiding residents dutifully going to the Inspection Services Department to register and them being turned away, saying, no, we're not going to allow you to register. You have to go back home or go someplace else and register online. How can you imagine an 85-year-old senior citizen being faced with that? And that actually has happened. It's that level of insensitivity and callousness of the bureaucracy that told me that, you know, maybe I did give the administration a little bit too much credit on this one. So I admit I made a mistake, and when I make future mistakes, I will admit it then as well. That's just the type of guy I am, I guess. But I want to commend Council Jackson for raising one of the many flaws that exist in the confusion. The confusion is so great, Mr. President, that one of the reasons given for postponing the hearing that was set by the Chair was that one of his staff persons, expert staff person could not attend. The Commissioner of ISD was available to attend, but he didn't feel comfortable answering the questions. So if the Commissioner of the Inspection Services Department doesn't have the level of confidence that he could answer the questions of the public, then what can we expect the ordinary citizens to do when confronted with this type of bureaucracy? So I'm looking forward to the hearing, Mr. President. I believe we did make a mistake. I made a mistake by voting for this, not because of the concept, but because of the tremendous bureaucracy involved in this implementation. I know it was a pilot program. It wasn't done very often around the country, but I think it's, it has gone too far and too onerous for many of our property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Yancy. Thank you for making sure that our kumbaya moment was only a moment and ended very quickly. Chair recognizes City Councilor Ayanna Pressley at this time.
So no, certainly, just because we're elected officials, we are not infallible. But I, for one, still stand behind the spirit and the intent of this legislation. I share the concerns relative to implementation. However, on the side of renters and consumers and immigrants and people living in poverty and seniors living in homes for 40 years that are not in code and students that are living in overcrowded conditions, you know, for those people, for immigrants and people living in poverty and seniors that don't know any better, that are living in spaces that are not in compliance with code, I stand behind the spirit and the intent of this legislation. We have plans being bandied about about an increase in housing, so much bigger than that. Everybody doesn't deserve to have shelter. Everybody deserves to have a home. And there are a lot of people that don't have a home because they are living in subpar conditions and are too afraid to report it for fear of retribution and eviction. And everybody has got to be checked. This would be like me pretending that domestic violence only happens in our poorest neighborhoods but not in the back bay. So no, I'm not going to sit here and say that the Four Seasons should be exempt from these sorts of checks and we should only be looking at motel sexes. We shouldn't be leaving any stone unturned. And I'm sorry that it's inconvenient, and I'm frustrated that the implementation has been flawed, but I'm on the side of renters and consumers and those families who can't speak for themselves. So I don't think that there was a mistake made here.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Dock at 1483 will be referred to Committee of City and Neighborhood Services. Chair recognizes Councilor Lamatina.
Mr. President, I just ask that you add my name on Dock number 1482.
Can you add the name of Council Lamatina onto Dock at 1482? Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Mike Ross.
Mr. President, I'd like to move reconsideration on Dock at 1475, the Mass Bike hearing for the purposes of having a hearing if possible.
Council Ross moves reconsideration of Dock at 1475. Is there a second? It's been seconded. Chair recognizes City Councilor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just, in the course of looking at de minimis items, some items may be small, but they're, they're large in impact. And clearly, this is an opportunity to talk about training our bicycle riders and providing safety and providing opportunities to learn the rule of the roads. And I think this is a great opportunity to bring our bicycle community in here. There are a lot of people, there's Mass Bike, but there's also a lot of local groups that want to know more about what this is. And so I would, I would think this might be a good item to have a hearing on, and I would move that we, we have that hearing.
Okay, so you're moving reconsideration. We have suspended and passed on Dock at 1475. Council Ross at this time is moving reconsideration for assignment to the Committee on Public Safety.
Correct.
Okay. Dock at 1475 is assigned to Committee on Public Safety for a hearing. Personnel orders.
Dock at number 1484, Council Murphy for Council Jackson.
Council Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of Dock at 1484. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dock at 1484 has passed.
Dock at number 1485, Council Murphy for Council Jackson.
Council Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of Dock at 1485. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dock at 1485 has passed. The clerk informs me there is one late filed matter in her hands, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. It is personnel in nature. Hearing no objection, the matter is so added to the objection, to the agenda, the clerk will read the addition to the agenda.
Council Stephen J. Murphy for Council Yancy.
Council Yancy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the late filed personnel order. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The late filed matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes Council Ayanna Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Council Pressley is instead asking unanimous consent to make a statement, seeing and hearing no objection. Council Pressley has the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to rise and say two things. One, during last week's busy council meeting, I did not have an opportunity to do something I'd wanted to do, so although it is a week late, I want to do it today. Last Wednesday was September 11, and it was the one-year anniversary of the passing of Bruce Bowling to the day, the same day Council Jackson and I had been at the State House for the annual prostate cancer awareness event. And Bruce Bowling was stolen from us because of prostate cancer. So I just wanted to take a moment to pay tribute and homage to the trailblazer and pragmatic visionary that was Bruce Bowling. On the books, we have the Boston Residents Jobs Policy and linkage legislation and so many things for which to credit him and to thank him. So I wanted to just take a moment to do that. So he may not physically still be here, but I personally, and I know I can say this for all of us, am still rolling with Bowling. The second thing in that next Tuesday is the primary, and I know we can't be political here. I just wanted to take a moment just to say how proud I am of all our colleagues who have decided to endeavor to pursue the office of mayor. I think you have represented this body well. For those who questioned whether or not this body is a rubber stamp or ineffectual or hard at work, I feel very proud to have served with all of you, and I wish each and every one of you the best of luck on Tuesday.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Let me just add that I was in the attendance at the mayoral forum that they herald in ME CN, and I was very proud of all of our colleagues. They certainly belonged up there and certainly were the head of the pack, in my view. So congratulations to all of you who are running for mayor. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Yeah, I rise to make a brief statement.
Council Linehan requesting unanimous consent, seeing and hearing no objection. Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Council Pressley, for those remarks. Those are, those are needed here, and they're important. And you all are doing a great job and representing us in a, in a fine fashion. And I'm honored to be on a body that, that is represented and works with folks like you, so I mean that. To get to some business, Friday, there will be a hearing on, on the Suffolk Downs election for November 5 pursuant to the expanding gambling commission. It's at 12 o'clock. It's in this chamber. And I just want to make sure that you're all aware of it. We know that you have extremely busy schedules, but it will be an opportunity for us to, we're on a fast schedule, and we're doing this because there are state guidelines that demand us, if we were going to host this election on November 5, the latest possible date we could have a hearing was Friday. So if we wanted to wait, if we were looking to, to do more, if we're looking to have an extension of that hearing, that will preclude us from having a November 5 election. So I just wanted everyone to know that and, and have it said for the record. And I hope that you'll all please join us and give Boston a chance to, to say what's on their mind about this particular gambling legislation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Linehan. At this time, the clerk informs me that there are three late filed matters which, in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. The chair is, asks all counselors and all guests, prepares to adjourn at this time. Chair has misplaced his notes. Council, take a brief recess before we adjourn. Oh, I've got it. Council back in session. The city council will close in memory of the following individuals on today, September 18, 2013. For Council Bill Linehan, John F. Daley, John H. Kraus, and Judith A. Edwards. For Council O'Malley Conley and the chair, John J. Jack Clardy and Dorothy A. Roth. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so to meet again on Wednesday, September 24, 2013, at 12 o'clock noon. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. The council stands adjourned. Good luck to everybody next Tuesday.